Roll call, please.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Pledge allegiance, please.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather together, we thank you for your endless goodness to us. Thank you for all the skills and talents you have given us and for everyone who is part of this beautiful team. We pray that you will provide us with great wisdom and insight as we discuss our work plans and make decisions about the future. We open our hearts to you now and invite you, invite your Holy Spirit to be present amongst us. For all this, we pray. Amen.
Next, we have item two A under Proclamations. Proclamation proclaiming September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four as National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims. We have Robert Garcia here.
Mayor.
Sir.
Commission, thank you for having us. Again, this is the twelfth annual candlelight vigil that we're gonna have. And I remember back in two thousand fifteen, you came forward, you were our keynote speaker, and you did a great presentation to the victims. It seems that as every year, we average about forty-two crimes or homicides that happen, not including vehicle homicide. But one of the things that I want to say is that the hope and unity and honor that we have with the families and the longstanding relationships that we carry beyond the verdict. And in some cases, they don't get a verdict or a justified outcome. For them, they are being sentenced for life when they see an injustice. For instance, even if it's a jury verdict of fifteen years, sometimes it doesn't fit the crime of a lifetime. And I can't tell them that when I gather with them on the support group meetings that we do weekly. The whole reason is for them to have a forum, a safe haven that they can cry, tell the frustrations with the, certainly with the justice system, what works, what doesn't work. The bottom line that they want is for them to be compassionate during the course of the trial and after the trial as they go along. But we have present with us is Marta Rangel Joliza, daughter out of Edinburgh. Mrs. Yarreal from the city afar, or the victim was living here in the city afar Julio. Ms. Blanca Garza, her son Fernando out of Mission. And there was three other they called in, two of them from here from the city afar, and another one, two victims from the city of Edinburgh. So I'm gonna say the victim's name is Angel, Javi, Magalena, and Rebecca. And we have Ms. Peñones Roberto, is her, his son, her son, out of Donna. So we encompass not only the city, but we encompass all of the Dallas County, including the Veranda Valley. And we're the, actually the one organization that is sponsored or affiliated with the National Parents of Murdered Children out of Cincinnati, Ohio. It's not a chapter, but it gave us all the national resources that they have for us to be able to accomplish this. But I can say, you've been the leader since day one, and I commend you for you and the other past administrations and the administration. It means the world to them when we partner and see. One of the discussions that we have had is that they tell us, Robert, at one point in two thousand sixteen, we had eight hundred and fifty victims at the event center. And as we gradually move forward, it's like less victims are not coming. And that's a manifestation of many variables that I cannot, you know, get the data. It's a self-organization, but one thing that we capture is how do we assist them? And how the pain that they have, and I will leave you with this. A mother sends me a, we capture little things, a synopsis during the surveys, and it says, "I still get flashbacks. It's been sixteen years, excuse me, it's been twelve years. Panic attacks hit me out of nowhere. My daughter was stabbed and shot multiple times in the head by her boyfriend. I have withdrawn from all my friends, they're all gone. I'm not the same. I feel stained, like a part of me has, it's broken beyond repair. I go to counseling, I take medications, I wear a mask and hide my pain whenever I speak to others." The only one organization that helps is the RGV Family and Friends of Murdered Children, because there are mothers like me that are hurting every single day, and they can hear my pain, and we share stories about our loved ones. So that was the whole idea of creating a safe haven for these mothers to come, because somehow law enforcement, aside from the investigation, that's their duty and the responsibility. The courts, it's the hearing and putting all the trials in place. The DA's office, responsibility to get an outcome that is essential for them, but also for the victims. But what happens after the trial? And we still continue, and some of these families have been with me since day one. Some have no justice, never received it, they are known and missing. Co-cases, I have about a hundred and sixty-five co-cases, about ten here in the city afar. There is no regional task force that are actual working, you know, task force for law enforcement to put together. I wish the legislation, that's always the big term for me, that would put an active task force for a hundred and sixty-five cases in the Dallas County that aren't solved. There's something wrong, and there's some that are solvable, but I don't have those resources. We can only hear the pain and the cry and have an empathy and a heart for them. So with that, I want to, on behalf of my board of directors and all the members or a vote on the board, they, my strength is their strength. I kept my promise to my mother when my brother was murdered in September thirteenth, two thousand eleven, and I continue that fight for justice and also the compassion and the empathy that they have rights as victims, which is about seventeen rights. So with that, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and also continue the partnership that you have installed in us and given us move forward. With all the commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
And part of the proclamation, it will be September twenty-fifth will be the actual date that Congress, both the Senate and Congress passed with a national affiliate to commemorate that particular date, because it's important, just like nine eleven, just like, you know, Korean War, veteran war, they decided to commemorate the murder victims in that particular. It might not be at the same level, but it is the same level for us, because their murders murder, not necessarily by terrorists or by acts of other violence, but it's a humanity and the crisis that comes with it.
Well, thank you for presenting again, and thank you for bringing those stories forward. Gracias a toda la familia por venir. This predates myself as being elected as mayor. It shows, siempre enseña que la ciudad es para siempre le puede la gente. And it's terrible to lose a loved one. It's familiar, su esposo, hija o hijo, marido, I mean, it's the same. No es cualquier cosa que la gente se va a olvidar de un día a otro, es parte de la vida, whole life. And we understand, y lo sentimos, estamos nuestro pesadilla, we're very sorry, que les ha pasado a todos, everybody who goes through it. And the city is always committed, since I've been here as well, that we will always be standing here with you, remembering your beautiful loved ones, and know that the city always stands for you, will help you in any way we can for your loss. Please call the proclamation.
And before I do, I'd like to extend my most sincere condolences to the families, yourself, and all of yous that go through that struggle every day, because, you know, everybody who loses someone and losing somebody without notice, it's hard, it's, I mean, it's tough to deal with. So my most sincere condolences to all of y'all. Whereas the National Parent of Murdered Children established September twenty-fifth as a National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims as a result of unanimously resolutions passed by the U.S. Senate on October sixteenth, two thousand seven, and the U.S. House of Representatives on May fourteenth, two thousand seven. And whereas POMC is dedicated to honoring the memory of those to violence and recognizing the profound and lasting trauma that families and communities endure. This National Remembrance Day is vital to raising public awareness and ensuring all loved ones are never forgotten. And whereas in two thousand twenty-three, an estimated two thousand three hundred and ninety-one homicides occurred in Texas, impacting over twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ten close relatives, with the Rio Grande Valley alone witnessing approximately forty-two murders and over four hundred and twenty relatives directly affected. And whereas the murder of a loved one steals from a family, a mother, father, sister, brother, son, daughter, husband, wife, partner, grandparent, aunt, or uncle, leaving an unfulfillable void and an overwhelming challenge to cope with their absence. And whereas survivors of homicide victims channel their pain and anger into powerful stories that reject paths of retaliation, shame, and isolation. Instead, they choose to embrace and teach lessons of compassion and peace. And where survivors transform their grief into a force for change, honoring their loved ones through leadership, grief support, and advocacy, working to reduce violence, promote prevention, and influence policy change locally and nationally. And now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the twenty-fifth day of September twenty-fourth as a National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims.
You want to bring your people up here so we can highlight their loved ones?
Absolutely.
Family? We'll let them?
I just want to say that we have Mrs. Colado, which is her daughter Wendy, on a mission as well, was murdered. She was a little bit.
Next, we have item two B, proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. We have Mario Liscano at DHR.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner. We'd like to thank you today for giving us this opportunity. We'd like to thank the City of Far for always allowing DHR Health to not only bring information and awareness on our proclamations for monthly recognitions. Again, my name is Mario Liscano, I'm the Administrator in Corporate Affairs for DHR Health. And with me joining in will be Dr. Alonso To Be saying a few words. So on behalf of our board, also board of managers, our physicians, our employees, and all our team, we'd like to thank you for giving this opportunity to allow us to present this proclamation.
You want to introduce, you want to let the doc, fine doc, that young kid there, say a few words?
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for having us. It really is an honor to stand in front of you, to give us, and thank you for giving us this time. Knowledge is power, and, you know, there are so many diseases that affect everybody, you know. Murder, cancer is one. So knowledge is key. Please, 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 this is important for everybody to go to their doctors, get checked out. This is a very curable disease if cut early. And so that's my goal, to come here, to give everybody the ability to see somebody and say, yes, I want to go get checked, I want to try and live as long and as healthy as I can. So thank you for your time, we really do appreciate it.
Doc, where are you from?
I'm from here, I'm from the valley. I've called Mission Home, I called Alamo Home, I've called San Juan Home. So I trained here, or I went to school here, I went to Pan Am when it was Pan Am. I went to Baylor College of Medicine, Houston Medical School. I went to the University of Miami for my residency and for my fellowship, and I came back. I am the valley's only urologic oncologist specializing only in cancer of organs that touch the urinary tract. So kidneys, bladders, prostates, penis, and testicular cancer. And so prostate cancer is near and dear to my heart. It is a very, very common malignancy, second most common cancer that men get. And so I came home to try and give the best care that I possibly can and to raise as much awareness as I possibly can around mi raza, my gente.
Well, we're so glad you came back. You've gone anywhere in the nation, and you decided to come back, that's really good. And really, really, I can't tell you how proud we are that you're from the valley. Thank you, sir.
Un honor. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Doctor?
Welcome, Doc.
Thank you, Doc.
Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men. And whereas this year, approximately two hundred and eighty-nine thousand and ten men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone this year, and roughly thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty will die this year from the disease, which is one man in every fifteen minutes. And whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, and whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preventing and protecting our families. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, we encourage the citizens of Far to increase the importance of prostate screenings. And now therefore, I, Dr. Caballero, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in him and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-fourth as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Next, we have item two C, proclamation proclaiming the week of October twenty-third to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as Red Ribbon Week. We have Chief Juan Gonzalez here for that proclamation. Along with Chief Rolando Garcia from PSJAISD.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners.
Welcome, Chief.
Mr. City Manager, thank you for having us. At that time of year, we're back in the full swing of things within PSJA and our school year kicking off. With that, we're getting ready for Red Ribbon Week coming up in October. This year's theme is a film-based theme, where you want to live free or drug-free, film it as well. So that's gonna be the theme of the parade that we're gonna have. This year, our parade is gonna be held in the city of Alamo. We're gonna be starting at nine o'clock on October twenty-sixth, right in front of PSJA Memorial. And the parade route will go north to Business Eighty-three and then turn east on Business to Alamo Central Park, where it will end from there. So we invite everyone on the board to attend. It's always been a great working relationship that we have within the tri-city and the city municipalities as well, and along with Chief Gonzalez, always helping us out with the heavy police presence from the city of Far to really get that message out to the kids of, you know, staying away from drugs and being drug-free.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming. You guys rotate that, right?
Yes, sir. Next year, it'll be back with City of Far.
Yes.
So you guys will get it this coming twenty twenty-six year.
And I want to thank you also, I mean, recently you guys had a little bit of a headache with some threats. And we all have friends and families who are involved in the school districts, whether they're employees or even loved ones, students. So they spoke very highly of the response that you guys undertook. And I hope you're collaborating with the local police force as well.
Yes.
That they're here to help you. And I just wanted to compliment you and your department and let you know that we did, we have noticed as residents also your quick response, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, absolutely. And as mentioned before, Chief Gonzalez is a quick, it doesn't take more than one ring before he answers the call whenever we need help. Or even before we call, he's picking up the phone and calling us, hey, you know, what do you need from us? You know, get me some, get me some investigators to go help you out or what have you, as we're still a growing agency. We rely on the network that we bring and just being able to have those contacts with the tri-city, state, and federal level as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate you. Whereas cities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies in the hard work and determination of our communities to create a drug-free environment. And whereas local leaders in government and in the community know that the support of the people in the neighborhoods is the most effective tool that they can have in their efforts to reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs by Texans. And whereas success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to drug education and prevention are imperative. And whereas red ribbon, whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena to Drug Enforcement Administration Agent, who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty-eight to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in the drug prevention efforts. And whereas October twenty-third through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four have been designated National Red Ribbon Week, calling on all Americans to show their support for a drug-free state by wearing a red ribbon and participating in drug-free activities during the week. And whereas the Red Ribbon Initiative will be observed year-round, presenting a unified and visible commitment to our intolerance toward the use of drugs and calling on all citizens of Far, San Juan, Alamo to participate in our year-round drug-free activities. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Mayor Garza, Mayor of the City of San Juan, JR Garza, Mayor of the City of Alamo, and Carlos G. Villegas, Jr., President of the PSJAISD School Board, by the virtue of the authority vested in us and on behalf of the City Commission of Far, San Juan, Alamo, and PSJAISD, do hereby proclaim the twenty-third through the thirty-first day of October, twenty twenty-four, as Red Ribbon Week. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioner, just want to also thank you for the support for this proclamation. We work very well with PSGISD School District as well as the other school districts that we have in Far. So throughout that week, we'll be providing education and awareness as well, so thank you.
Anybody for public testimony?
Yes, sir, I have Mr. Pedro Garcia. He signed up to speak on item eight B.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Always ready to have you here.
Thank you. Whenever?
Yes, sir.
I'm Pedro Garcia, Artistic Director of the Far Community Theater Company, a five oh one C three organization, and this is Dahlia Buche, our new Assistant Artistic Director.
Great.
PCT was established in Far in two thousand eight, now in its seventeenth year. We wish to thank the City of Far and its community for the continued support all these years. This evening, September sixteenth, our theater invites you for a special performance entitled Miguel Hidalgo El Insurrepto, a fifteen-minute monologue presented live that was written by Mercedes Varela Garcia from Reynosa. The monologue culminates with El Grito de Dolores, in honor of Mexico's Independence Day, which is today. Two shows at seven thirty and at eight thirty, free to the public today, September sixteenth, at our little theater in downtown Far.
Hello. First of all, I do want to thank you guys for your continued support to our theater and to the arts in the city. I would like to take this time to invite you to our next main stage show, which is Path of Marigold by a writer, Raquel Valle Santies, she is from Laredo. We have a total of twelve talents, including actresses and crew from the city of Far and other cities in the valley. This is gonna be on October second through the sixth here at our downtown area. And also, we have October ten at the DRC Center on Decker Road and October eighteenth on the Far One Center.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much again for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Under item four B, public hearing, solicitation of comments from the general public on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed property tax rate for the city of Far. Anybody sign up?
No, sir.
Okay, for item four C, public hearing, solicitation of comments from the general public on budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
No, sir.
Thank you. Under City Manager's Report, under five A, we have submission of sales tax collection report. There is a three-point eighty-nine percent increase year-to-date true growth. Information's in your packets if you have any questions. Next, we have item five B, announcement from Alzheimer's Association, walk tens Alzheimer's on Saturday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have Maxine Vieta here to present.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Maxine Vieta, I'm the Program Manager for the Alzheimer's Association. With me, I have P V V Asenor, our Walk Manager, and our fabulous and fearless Walk Community Chair, Laura Valdez. And of course, our partner in crime is Cynthia Gutierrez, Dr. Gutierrez. We just wanted to just say thank you again for having us today, just very briefly. Just wanted to share with you that as the disease becomes so relentless, we are getting closer to having a blood test that will let us know if we have Alzheimer's disease or any other form of dementia that should become part of your regular physicals that you take every month. So that is phenomenal, and we are very proud of the fact that we are funding some of that research. So once we have more word on that, we will definitely share with you. In honor of Hispanic National Month, we also wanted to share yet again, the figures are that Hispanics are one point five more likely than any other group to develop Alzheimer's disease and the least likely to reach out for their resources. We are very appreciative of the fact that you have given us a house or home for us to do our workshops monthly. They are slowly growing, but I feel that we are reaching the family. But I feel that we are reaching the families that really need it in order for them to learn more about this.
You are or you're not?
We are. Yes, we are. We are, uh, reaching more families than ever before. We hope that they can learn, I mean, learn, they can grow more and so on. Um, I'm a good speech person, but I don't know why I'm getting nervous when I come before you. I get tongue-tied. But nonetheless, we just want to be appreciative of that. And because of all the work that we do, we continue to do in the community, it, it is greatly because of the partnerships that we have with the City of Far, DHR, who continues to be a, in the forefront. They have joined the ALS Net Network, which is basically the registry for all the patients that are being treated today with LeKembi. Um, that is pretty much following all the protocols, making sure that we are following, um, side, side effects and everything like that. So it's very appreciative of DHR always being in the forefront when it comes to Alzheimer's and treatment and so on. With that being said, I lend the floor to you.
Thank you so very much for having us here, uh, to talk about Alzheimer's. Um, I am the Chairperson for twenty twenty-four for the Walked In Alzheimer's for the Upper Valley. I want to say thank you to the City of Far for your relentless dedication to the walk and to this devastating disease that affects so, so many people. It's not just about the person that's diagnosed, but all of the family members that are affected by it. It's, it really does take a community, um, to help, to help a family through this, this journey. Um, our walk is scheduled to be on October the nineteenth at the Far One Center, fabulous place. We had it there last year. It was so much fun and it's a, it's a way for all of us to connect. This disease can seem overwhelming, um, for the caretakers as well. And sometimes they feel alone, like they don't have, no one else is going through that. And, um, it may seem, may seem contradictory, right, that you have DJs and music and all this stuff to celebrate with something that is such a devastating, uh, journey that families are going through. However, just the feel of community and being able to talk to other people that are saying like, oh, I went through that. Myself, I hold a purple flower because I cared for my mom for fifteen years as she battled the disease. Um, and I was very fortunate that one day when I was really challenged with, um, with what the next step was, I reached out to the Alzheimer's Association and I got Maxine. And, um, and so here I am, all these years later, um, now seeing, okay, I want to, I'm ready to dedicate my time and my focus in helping build awareness. So many people aren't aware of the association, all the tools and everything that they offer. So, um, thank you. Thank you so much for giving us your location and your support for the walk. I will challenge you and everyone here to join, uh, to create a team, create a team and walk with us in our walk. Come and see firsthand what we do and, and, um, the families that have T-shirts with their love, with their, uh, family members that do the walk along with us. Um, it's a wonderful, wonderful, um, place. You'll just see how, just a lot of like minds and families hugging and shedding some tears as well, uh, in rememberings, uh, remembrance of our loved ones. So please, I challenge the City of Far to have a team for each department and come and walk, come and see what we're about. Please join us. October the nineteenth, it starts at eight AM and the DJ will be there till twelve. Um, and we'll have a lot of diff, a lot of our sponsors are going to have different, uh, tents there and, and things that you can, information you can pick up on and, and we will be there also to help and support and sometimes just give a hug.
Eight AM to when?
Eight to twelve.
Like midnight?
No, noon, 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 eight to noon. No, that's too much. That's too much. That's too much.
I know. Since you brought it up.
Yes.
I'm curious about something.
Uh-huh.
So you, you took care of your mom, right?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's a, it's a very wonderful thing you did. Um, I was, more, more families were that way. Um, would you have, uh, found it useful to have a, uh, facility where, because it's very draining emotionally, mentally for people to take care of, of, of anyone? I would imagine, I think, would it have been helpful for you as a family member to have been able to take a weekend off, a break, and have somewhere that somebody can help you take care of your loved one for that brief moment, a day or two, just to take a breather? Would you have found that helpful?
Absolutely. It would have been helpful. Um, I, from time to time, would, would pay privately for, um, someone to come to my house and stay with my mom so that I could go to the room and sleep because there were so many times that I didn't sleep. That, I mean, you know, you're caring for someone. They, their nights and days are mixed up. They get up and they walk around. And so I, I didn't sleep and I still had work and I still had all of my other responsibilities. So there was time where I would say like, I need somebody, just come for four hours so I can go to the room and just sleep.
That's right.
It, it is very difficult on families. So yes, it would be very, very helpful. There was a place where, um, we could have family members or somebody come to the home and, and stay or, or somewhere where they can go and actually have some activity. Because that's also really important to have some stimulus of other people and activity around them.
So, um, so our, our commission is composed of a few people that are in, in healthcare, uh, one is Dr. Caballero, myself and, uh, Dr., well, I always call him Doctor, but his name is Ricardo Medina. He used to, uh, be at that medical center. One of the things that we, we touched on as a, as a commission is, uh, we know that's important. That's where we've, uh, we have a, a health, uh, a, a hero hospital coming up. But not only that, we've also thought of, the commission has moved, we've moved forward on possibly, uh, creating for Far, right? To, to be clear, for Far, because we don't want any misunderstandings with the public, uh, for you guys as, as Far residents. You know, we do need exactly what you said. You know, we do need a, 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 a place, right, where, uh, our loved ones, uh, meaning the providers that are taking care of their loved ones, they need a break. And so one of the extensions of what we've been discussing with, uh, with our private sector partners is the fact that, uh, we're looking at possibly building a, a joint venture facility where people can bring their loved ones. So you guys can take a break. You guys can relax and, uh, you know, obviously it's covered by healthcare professionals. It's not your seven eleven store, right? It's, it's, so they will be under the watchful eye of healthcare professionals at all times. But it's, it's a way to helping our, our, our population with their mental stress and emotional stress of having to deal with that. Not that they complain, but we know it's very, uh, labor-intensive, emotional draining as well. So just, you know, since you brought it up, that's what we're looking, uh, moving forward to on, on another front that we're doing as a city commission. And so that's a directive we've given our city manager to make sure that as we look forward on, on that front, you may be seeing that pop up, you know, at least for our city and it is for Far residents.
That's amazing. Thank you so much. That just speaks volumes on the dedication from the City of Far to, to your community. Because that, um, I mean, as Maxine talked about the numbers of, of, of people that are diagnosed and, and just don't, don't have support. And, uh, so that's wonderful. Thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
And if I just might add to that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, we will be having additional funding for, um, respite innovations again early spring. So we will definitely forward that information to, to the commission and to Cynthia so that they can apply for it. Hopefully setting up some respite. Yes, absolutely.
Yes, all, all correspondence go through our city manager. So no misunderstandings. And that way it all gets disseminated to the appropriate authorities and there's more than one person working on the, on this endeavor. And so we want to be sure that not only finance, but compliance, our health department, our media department, everybody gets what we're trying to do. So with all due respect, make sure you send it, always send all correspondence to one. And that, that way they disseminate it and there's no misunderstandings on how we want things done.
Okay, sure. Fantastic. I hope to see all of you guys there October nineteenth.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
October nineteenth at eight AM. You can come at eight, you can come at nine. Just come and join us.
Absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next item five C, city events of interest.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission. For the record, Dulce Herrera with Office of City Communications.
Yes.
Uh, today we'll be presenting our, our promo that we have for Avocado Festival. Uh, I'm pretty sure you've seen the flyers around City Hall and our city buildings. We've been putting up some posters.
Mr. Medina's excitement.
You're going to have a guac-tastic time. And let's go ahead and play the video.
Avocado Festival returns this October twelfth in downtown Far. Fun carnival rides, various avocado contests, over one hundred local vendors and an artist lineup you won't want to miss, featuring country singer Trey Gonzalez. Red, a Taylor Swift tribute band, and a headlining show by country superstar Chris Young. It's the City of Far's Avocado Festival with free entry before five. For more information, visit avocadofest.com. The first one hundred guests get a free Avocado Fest T-shirt.
Okay, we're going to play it again.
Avocado Festival returns October twelfth in downtown Far. Fun carnival rides, various avocado contests, over one hundred local vendors and an artist lineup you won't want to miss, featuring country singer Trey Gonzalez. Red, a Taylor Swift tribute band, and a headlining show by country superstar Chris Young. It's the City of Far's Avocado Festival with free entry before five. For more information, visit avocadofest.com. The first one hundred guests get a free Avocado Fest T-shirt.
So this promo is already going out on our local radio stations, our news stations, um, our partners, media partners are coming with us and they're approaching the story and they're promoting it and so are we. So maybe you will hear it on the radio. It's already been playing since today until October twelfth. So we can't wait to see you guys there.
Is it true that during the wrestling thing, you're going to have people in costume, tomato and?
Tomatoes. Avocados. I, I, you were going to dress as an avocado, no, sir?
Yeah.
Well, then we can't wait to see you in the ring. That's it for events of interest.
All righty. Thank you.
All right, next, Mayor Commission. I want to call, uh, our Fire Chief Pilat Rodriguez up to the podium. So Mayor Commission, recently the, uh, RGV Women's Chamber recognized Chief Pilat Rodriguez with the Distinguished Service Award. And I wanted to bring him up here to compliment him on his extraordinary leadership and thank him for everything that he does for our Fire Department and the leadership that he provides to the city in that regard. So congratulations to Chief Rodriguez and thank you for your continued service to the city.
Mayor and Commission, City Manager, thank, thank you. Appreciate this recognition. Um, you know, it's an honor to serve the City of Far as, as the Fire Chief and I, and I thank you for allowing me to service as the Chief for Department. Um, I'd also like to thank the men and women of the Far Fire Department who do the heavy lifting every day and really provide the excellent service to the citizens of Far and keep them safe and sound. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief, once again. Did you bring, uh, hey, Chief, did you bring your, that trophy? Yeah. Do you mind if we get a picture with you, sir?
All right, next I'm going to call, uh, Assistant EMS Chief Ben Martinez up for an employee recognition.
Good afternoon, Mayor City Commission. My name is Ben Martinez, Assistant EMS Chief. Um, with me today, I have the Texas, uh, RGV Chapter of Emergency Nurses Association. They're known as the RGV Chachalacas. And I also have a board member from the Texas, uh, Emergency Nurses Association who's with me as well. Um, first we'll go with names. We're, we're here recognizing Raúl Escamia. He's our Training and Compliance Captain.
Right.
Behind him is, uh, Aaron Salinas. He's with the Texas Emergency Nurses Association. He's on the board. And behind him, we have Chris. He's, uh, Cisneros. He's our Operations Captain, Gabriela Guerrero. She's our Quality Assurance Coordinator. And then back here, we have, uh, Kristen Worth. She's a member of the RGV Chapter. Clarissa Aguirre. And we have Chris Shazek. She is the President of this chapter. And then we have Jennifer Volsey as well. So, uh, I want to begin by thanking all of the prehospital, uh, professionals at Far EMS for always seeking excellence every day, uh, whether it's treating patients or collaboratively working with hospitals or associations to improve patient care. In, uh, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, uh, the RGV Chapter of the Emergency Nurses Association, the RGV Chachalacas, I like saying that name, uh, nominated the Training and Compliance Captain Raúl Escamia for the Behind the Scenes Award, which recognizes an individual who has made significant contributions behind the scenes to provoke the ENA's mission of advancing excellence in emergency nursing. The RGV Chachalacas nominated Captain Escamia for his contributions in providing training to prehospital providers that affect the continuity of care , uh, the patient receives once the emergency, once in the emergency room. Captain Escamia has over twenty-six years of EMS experience and has been with the City of Far EMS for the last three years. After receiving the State Behind the Scenes Award, the RGV Chachalacas nominated him for the National Award in twenty twenty-four. On September fourth, Captain Escamia received the National Behind the Scenes Award, uh, from the Emergency Nurses Association. So he got the National Award. At this time, I would like to bring up the President of the RGV ENA, Chris Shazek, to say a couple of words.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. And just to clarify, I was President in twenty twenty-three. Ms. Jennifer Volsey is President this year, Clarissa, President-elect, and Kristen is one of our Board Directors and Aaron is one of our Texas ENA. But just to thank you, just a little bit about the award. We are so proud of Raúl. And the work that he's done is also a reflection of the leadership of City of Far EMS. But the Rio Bravo Chachalacas, just to clarify, do y'all know what a chachalaca is? It's a bird and it's a noisy, social bird. And as emergency, yeah. So as emergency nurses, we chose that name for ourselves about twenty years ago because it, we think it describes us. But the mission of the local chapter of the Emergency Nurses Association is to provide education. We actually teach from Brownsville all the way to Laredo. The team was in Laredo teaching trauma class. And other things that we do is each one of us as emergency nurses represent different hospitals and organizations in our community. And then there's always just one special person, in this case, it was Captain Escamia, that I got to know through my position at Rio Grande Regional in education and he helped us teach our new graduate nurses. And then in addition to that, that just kept spiraling into more and more activities with our community, our hospitals and our members. So just to really let y'all know, not only did Raúl win the National Award, it's actually an international award. Um, he was selected against applicants for this award all over the world and, uh, he was number one. And, uh, we know why. So once again, thank you for having us and congratulations, my friend.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize that until now. So congratulations. Do you want to say any words, Mr. Escamia?
So I, I met Raúl in two thousand and five. I was an EMT basic student and, and I'll never forget, you know, he was at McAllen Medical, outside the trauma rooms. And so I asked him, I asked him, at that time, he was a paramedic and, and I asked him about his profession. So twenty years later, I'm, I'm administration with the School of Nursing. And for EMS, Raúl, everyone has been amazing with what they've done as far as working to help our nursing students. And, and, and I realized that, you know, I just, I just needed to share that because it's important that you know the caliber of person that he is, the leader. Um, as, and as far as a medic, um, he, the City of Far has, we, you, I always advocate for, for our own, for our, our raza here in the valley. Because, you know, many times EMS, they're, they're not seen as a part of the system. You know, they're, they're like, oh, you guys are just ambulance drivers. But what he's done is he's helped prepare for EMS at another level. So he competed with the best of the best. And that's something that we should all be very proud of, to have him here in the City of Far and helping address the needs of our community. And, and, and I can assure you that he'll continue to do that day in and day out. And that's the high caliber of a person that he is, again, as a leader, as a medic. And that attests the leadership that Far EMS is doing and having an impact. I, my background is a medic, obviously. There's no one that is at the caliber that these guys are, especially Raúl. And I'll say, I've said it at the state level and I've said it at the national level. And, and, you know, it, it's, it's something, you know, it, it's, it's big. And this is a big win for, for us, more importantly, for him as a leader. And I just want to thank you guys for this. And I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just very humbled and grateful and extremely honored to have been nominated. First of all, you know, to just have been nominated, chosen by an elite group of people that, you know, are, are best in what they do. Nothing would have been possible, obviously, without people like Ben, Chris, Gabby, people I work with, right? Uh, I stand on the shoulders of giants, you know, that's, that's the only way, it's the only reason I'm up here. Uh, Chris also especially, I've learned a lot from her for teaching, uh, uh, different classes. And so it's been, I was, and, and all, I was in awe. I didn't understand the, the, the level or how big this was until I saw the map at the, at the ENA conference where I received the award, that there was people from all over the world that literally were going to this conference and they had submitted applications. And I was like, wow, wow. So, uh, just deeply, uh, grateful and just honored. And I'm, I'm grateful to be here, uh, with the City of FAR, at FAR EMS, uh, since the beginning, since, since we opened up. So, um, it's, it's been a great ride, it's been a great journey and I'm, I'm looking forward to the future. We're doing great things. We're gonna do even better things.
Yes, we are. Congratulations once again to you and your family. It's a lot of sacrifice for them for you to, for you to achieve these goals and you did it. And you have a lot of people behind you, a lot of people supporting you. Obviously, you're big in education and, you know, we, we're, we're very blessed to have, uh, DHR as well on here and also their, uh, weekly educational conferences that you guys attend. They're very meaningful to you, all of you. And we, we're gonna, regional being here means a lot to myself and Dr. Caballero, uh, to see, uh, the more health systems we have in our city. Whether it be presenting awards or educating the public, the better off we all are. So I'm, I'm always happy to see everybody here at the table. So on behalf of the commission, myself, we're extremely proud of you and, and your lovely organization and thank you for everything you guys do for our community worldwide. That's, that's what it sounds like. And this wonderful award, I'm sure, means the world to you, but it does to us as well. We're very proud of you, sir. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Commission, next we're gonna call up Adolfo Garcia and some of his staff for recognition on their recent accreditation for the FAR Memorial Library from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission.
Hello, Mayor Commission.
Nice to see you again, sir.
Yes, how do you top that, really? Say the best for last.
You always do.
Adolfo Garcia, your library director, with my staff, we've got Ruby and Jerry, Catalina and Paula. Uh, yes, it just shows you the, the caliber of employees that we have here with the City of FAR and the ones working, uh, for, for the library. Uh, just to, uh, let you know, we, just announcing the accreditation of the library, one more year, year after year, we've shown that, um, you know, it takes a certain kind of city to, to really, uh, get this, this type of accreditation. Thank you, uh, for the commission, for all your support, city manager as well, and, and all the staff that year after year have been making this accomplishment. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. You always run a very good ship.
Well, thank you.
You do great events there. The public, they love our library. And thank you for participating in the, a lot of the public stuff that we do and your staff does a great job.
So, uh, anything you can bring forward to make our, you know, library better?
And of course, staff always has a better ideas to make you shine, right? So make sure you take care of them.
Yes, we, we certainly will. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we'd like to take a picture with you.
That's right. Ladies, great job.
All right, before we continue with Consent Agenda, just wanted to note that on Consent Agenda, Item C two will be for denial, all the others will be for approval. Consent Agenda, all items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, one of stitcher for the record. One of stitcher. Item seventy-eight, consideration in action, if any, on ordinance adopting tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, adoption in one reading. Commissioner Medina has the language.
I move that property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point seven six seven six, which is effectively a four point two five percent increase in the tax rate. Do you have a second?
Motion to approve.
No, we have a second. A second.
You made the motion earlier.
Your second.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
All right, Item seven B, consideration in action, if any, on ordinance adopting and approving the budget for a year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-four and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Mayor Commission, we are proud to present a budget that will produce a ten point nine million, uh, projected surplus that will be put back into the reserve funds. We were also able to provide raises for all city staff. And none of this at the cost of the taxpayers. We did not raise our tax rate, so. So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item seven C, consideration in action, if any, on ordinance amending ordinance zero dash two thousand twenty-two dash zero one relating to the number of authorized civil service positions with the fire and police departments.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seventy, consideration in action, if any, on resolution for nomination of candidates to the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-seven. The staff recommends Albert Cardenas. Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seventy, consideration in action, if any, on resolution appointing one member to the FAR Memorial Library Board. Staff recommends Dana Trejo. So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item eighty, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement on a letter intent from Citrus Bay Owners Association on donation of green and recreational property.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item eighty, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into a service agreement with the FAR Community Theater for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Go for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item eighty, consideration in action, on, item eighty, we need to untable?
Move to untable.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It's untabled.
All right, eighty, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with the International Consulting Engineers from Corpus Christi, Texas for professional service for the City of FAR and forestry in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred. So move.
Second.
Is this the tree, we're going to the schools and stuff?
This is for the canopies for the schools, eight different schools in the P S J area. Yes, correct.
All in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Item eighty, consideration in action, if any, on amendment number five of the construction management agreement with Brownstone Consultants for citywide fiber optic broadband extension project. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item eighty, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement for public safety video surveillance and related equipment, software and accessories with Axon Enterprises from Scottsdale, Arizona.
Go for approval.
Second.
So, again, nobody local can do this.
No, this is a existing contract, Mayor, that we have. It's expiring five years. It's for our, uh, police dash cam body cameras and things like that. So we're just extending the contract and continuing service with them. And Axon is a very reputable company amongst the law enforcement.
That's true, Chief. I don't know anything about this.
Uh, yes, Mayor, it's, uh, we have Axon right now that it pretty much operates all our body cam and car and evidence dot com. And it also includes our, uh, iCloud base where all the videos are stored. So this is a renewal for the next five years. If we have any issues, it will work. Yes, it's worked very well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item eighty, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into a term contract for the purchase and delivery of HMAC cold mix and caliche with Sinolo Materials from Edinburgh, Texas. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item eighty, consideration in action, if any, on release of final payment and retainage in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-six, seventy-three to international consulting engineers and acceptance of the donation acceptance program fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
Second.
I'm glad they're done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item eight H, consideration in action, if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into a purchase and service contract for a cloud-based telephone VoIP system with to go-to communications from Boston, Massachusetts to the inter-local purchasing system tips number two two one, zero zero three. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Uh, item eight I, we're requesting to table that item.
Table.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It is tabled. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is, it passes and we are adjourned at five o'clock. Thank you.